Good evening, our public meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father, our Father, we thank you for this day and your many blessings all day long, seen and unseen. We thank you for this council. We thank you for the department heads, Father, with water, electric, gas, whatever you that we so easy to depend on. Turn the switch, the light come on. Turn the faucet, the water comes on. Have police protection, sleep sound at night, wake up. We take all those things for granted. But this time we want to say thank you. Just thank you for the things that the city government does for the citizens of Cartersville. Now, Father, at this council meeting, come down and be with us as you make decisions that govern the city. Guide us and direct us, and we'll be so grateful. We ask thee blessing and all blessings in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Throw me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God and God, in the midst of war with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Drake, the roll, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5. Taff Wren, Ward 6.
Present.
I will make note, Councilman Stepp is busy coaching a recreation football game tonight. This was originally on the calendars, our civic youth day, with a morning meeting. I know our department heads are very sad that that didn't happen, because that's one of the days they look forward to the most all year. But we have a night meeting, so that game was scheduled for this Thursday night. Councilman Fox had a business obligation as well, so we wish them well in what we're doing, and we'll try to get through the business of the city of Cartersville this evening. We'll start with the approval of the council meeting minutes from our September 3 meeting. And council, you've had an opportunity to look these over, and if there are any changes that need to be made, now would be the time to point those out to our clerk, and if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We'll start with SU 20-02. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, this case has been properly posted and advertised. There appears to be no conflicts of interest. This is a special use permit request for a title pawn shop located at 410 South Tennessee Street. That's at the intersection with Garrison Drive there at South Bridge. This is a fairly typical or standard procedure for this particular use. The applicant did file the application. It does meet the criteria of a special use or for obtaining a special use. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval. The applicant is present. If you had any additional questions, okay?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menino at this time? Thank you, sir. And at this time, I'll open up a public hearing for SU-02, and anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for SU 20-02. Council, we'll take this up for consideration at our next meeting. We will move on to another first reading warrants. Ms. Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here at the direction of my board to request institution of the pub crawl ordinance. This is basically a replication of what we brought in March, and the alcohol control board and the DDA board both recommended approval. Of course, we stand ready to do the will of council as far as this goes.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
All right, thank you, guys.
Are there any questions for Lilly at this time? Okay. Counsel, time for discussion.
Well, I think we had a lot of questions answered or revealed a lot of things in the work session. I think some of the generalities of this or the openness of non-restriction of this ordinance, which I think is not similar, is not the same as the one that came before, because now it is for four dates or four, and it's a open general to anybody. So I think that that is, may need some consideration.
And councilman, if you would, I know that you alluded to the comments in work session. If you'd like to express what those were, just so they're in the minutes of the meeting, because we have a couple of council members that aren't here and we've got the public. If you care to, I don't want to make you speak to something you don't want to, but I did want to, just in the transparency, that way they would be in the official minutes of the city.
Right, and I appreciate that. I do have a written statement to read tonight, and I'll give the full statement to the clerk for the minutes, but it is from a different perspective, and if the mayor would allow me to read that, I will in a moment. But I think there is some thing where this ordinance does open it up to anyone who then can hold the pub crawl, not just the DDA. So you open it to outside promoters, and then we also don't have any limitations on participants. We don't have limitations on how many establishments are there and how many drinks are then offered. And so when we look at the ordinance, it's very, very open, and I think those things need to be considered when we look at this. I think that's probably what I expressed earlier in the work session, those concerns. I will, but if you'll give me a moment, I will read this, just since I prepared. I pared it down to just a moment or just about a page and a half from what I have, but I'll give the full reading to the clerk for the records. But I'll say this, in light of September being National Recovery Month and that alcohol contributes to poisonings and overdose from opioids and other substances, I am compelled to give a warning. The proposed pub crawl ordinance has no limits on how many establishments can participate, how many tickets can be sold, how many drinks can be consumed. The ordinance is unlimited. This ordinance would also allow for open containers and public consumption of alcohol in the downtown business district and beyond. Listen to these striking statistics from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. These can be found at cdc.gov. Excessive alcohol use includes binge drinking, heavy drinking, and any alcohol used by pregnant women or anyone younger than 21. Binge drinking is defined as consuming four or more drinks on an occasion for a woman or five or more drinks on an occasion for a man. Binge drinking is the most common, costly, and deadly pattern of excessive alcohol use in the United States. It is a serious but preventable public health problem. Excessive alcohol use is responsible for about 93,000 deaths a year in the United States, with binge drinking being responsible for almost half of the deaths. In 2010, excessive alcohol use cost the U.S. economy $249 billion. Binge drinking was responsible for 77% of these costs at $191 billion. Binge drinking has serious risks and is associated with many health problems, including the following: unintentional injuries such as car crashes, falls, drownings, burns, and alcohol poisoning; violence including homicide, suicide, intimate partner violence, and sexual assault; unintended pregnancy and poor pregnancy outcomes including miscarriage and stillbirth; chronic diseases such as high blood pressure, stroke, heart disease and liver disease; cancer of the breast, mouth, throat, esophagus, liver, and colon; alcohol use disorders, and poisonings and overdoses from opioids and other drugs. What message are we sending our youth when we promote and endorse this type of binge drinking behavior through a pub crawl? Alcohol is the most commonly used and abused drug among youth in the United States, according to the Surgeon General. Here's what we are up against with our youth, as reported by the CDC. Excessive drinking is responsible for more than 3,500 deaths among underage youth each year and cost the U.S. $24 billion in economic costs in 2010. Although the purchase of alcohol by persons under the age of 21 is illegal, people ages 12 to 20 drink 11% of all alcohol consumed in the United States. In 2018, the National Survey on Drug Use and Health reported that 19% of youth aged 12 to 20 years drink alcohol, and 12% reported binge drinking in the reported 30-day window. In 2019, the Monitoring the Future Survey reported that 8% of eighth graders and 30% of 12th graders drank during the reported 30-day window, and 4% of eighth graders and 14% of the 12th graders binge drank during the last two weeks of those 30 days. Youth who drink alcohol are more likely to experience the following consequences: school problems such as higher absence and failing grades; social problems such as fighting and lack of participation in youth activities; legal problems such as arrest for driving or physically hurting someone while drunk; unwanted, unplanned, and unprotected sexual activity; physical and sexual assault; high risk for suicide and homicide; alcohol-related car crashes and other unintentional injuries such as burns, falls, and drowning; misuse or abuse of other drugs; death from alcohol poisoning; early initiation of drinking is associated with development of an alcohol use disorder later in life. So I ask, how are we leading our community? I call on us to give serious thought to these statistics and facts from the CDC. I am challenged by the corporate powers that are vested in us as a city council. Section 103-K of the city charter says this, that we are to define, regulate, and prohibit any act, practice, conduct, or use of property which is detrimental or likely to be detrimental to the health, morals, safety, security, peace, convenience, or general welfare of inhabitants of the city. I firmly believe that considering these facts from the CDC, pub crawls would be detrimental or likely to be detrimental to the citizens of our city. Join me in promoting good health, strong morals, sure safety, sound security, calming peace, ready convenience, and quality welfare in our city. And with that, I do make a motion that we remand this ordinance back to the alcohol control board, and I will, and with our concerns that we have about the openness of it and other concerns, consider it and send it back to them for more consideration.
Okay. Before I ask if there's a second to that motion, I would add that one of the concerns in the work session was timeframe, that there's no defined timeframe. So, for instance, the pub crawls have traditionally been over a couple of nights, a couple of days, and currently in the ordinance, there's nothing that limits it from being from, you know, from a couple of days to a couple of months if that were the case. It's just not defined. So anyhow, I have a motion to remand this ordinance back to the alcohol control board for other consideration. Does anybody care to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And raise your right hand, too, since I've got, so I've got any opposed to that.
No.
Okay, so we've got two for and two against. So by ordinance, it needs to have four votes to pass, so the motion fails. So it will not be remanded back at this time. We can have further discussion, and I think that might be necessary. I will say that historically, the Downtown Development Authority has had pub crawls and had them rather successfully, and the downtown businesses have benefited from those. The crux of this particular ordinance, really, while it's wrapped in a pub crawl ordinance, the whole, I mean, if you took out the one line of it about having walk-around alcohol, I mean, it's what they've been doing anyway. This is simply a request to allow on certain days of the year for people to walk around downtown with a glass, provided that you're participating in it and you're carrying this glass. If I'm carrying a glass and I'm participating in this, it's fine. If somebody else is walking next to me and they didn't have a glass or they're not part of it, and they've got the same thing in their cup that I do, they're in violation of a city ordinance. My personal feeling is that if we're going to have the discussion about entertainment district, that needs to happen amongst council and probably take a little bit more time. If council chose to do nothing with this ordinance, the DDA could still have their scheduled pub crawl. The businesses would still benefit exactly the way that they have in the past. And with 100 participants and seven establishments benefiting from it, you're talking about over a two-day period. I mean, that's 15, you know, seven groups of 15 roughly. So there's been some discussion about COVID and having people outside and being spread out a little bit more. I don't feel that over a three- or four-hour period, that having 15 additional people is going to be creating that tremendous of a hardship on those businesses. I don't vote unless you guys are split all the way, and then I get my way every time. But I do want council to consider the fact that, again, this isn't a crossroads about the pub crawl, it's a crossroads about whether or not you're going to allow people to walk from point A to point B with a cup on their hand in certain days.
Well, I agree with that, and I would say that the other portion of that, then, is the part that we brought up in work session about private property. And now you're causing the private property owner to have to confront the person who brings on the alcohol to their property. I'll just, not to point anybody out, I have not asked for their permission to say, but I think like coconuts, they're in the downtown district. If the pub crawl, they have a drink and they move then to go eat ice cream on their outside, if the owners of that establishment do not want alcohol, then you are now putting that person into a position to have a confrontation that they may not be comfortable in having or may not want. I don't think that that is a fair position to put some of our business owners in downtown. I think, and I don't, and as we said in the past, the pub crawl governed by the DDA has sold out without the outside walking around with alcohol. And I think that that is notable when we start talking about this and that, you know, it was even stated that this is the purpose of this ordinance, is for the outside walking around with the alcohol. So I think now you bring that alcohol from this establishment outside, and if you choose not to be around it, you have no choice now. You are now bringing it onto the public street, and I think that, too, is also an issue.
Right, now the pub crawl has a route, right? So you have X amount of businesses that participate, they go on a route, they consume, and then they are done.
There's, the number of businesses who participate, the route is chosen by the participants, because we do allow for the participants to visit all the establishments over two days, and then they may be ordered to vacation. And that is with the intention of not expecting anyone to have to consume that many drinks in a single evening. It's with the intention of being able to make it multiple days. So there are participating businesses, but not a defined, you know, this is stop one, this is stop two, this is stop three. So it's a little bit more free flow.
It's kind of like going to an amusement park and pick whatever ride you want to go on.
So the crux of my issues with it, just so that you can talk to the board and try to iron out some things between now and when we hear this again, I do think there needs to be some form of maximum participants and maximum number of days.
Okay.
You know, will one of that happen in this 30 days?
Sure.
I don't think that would be fair by a long shot.
Absolutely.
Those are some of my hopes.
I would also add that there's a requirement that anyone who wants to put on a pub crawl must go through the DDA. They can't just show up, say, "All right, we do this," or just show up, fill out the application, and, you know, carry on. They need to essentially provide you with their plan, allow you guys an opportunity to say yes or no, then say yes, then go into the application process, and even after that point, y'all are still in time. So for me, it's got to be some language in there that specifies that it goes through you guys planning and not just through the application.
So you're, and just to clarify, you're saying that you would want the, for it to get clearance from the Downtown Development Authority before it went to planning and development? I mean, ultimately, planning and development makes that decision.
There needs to be some type of, I guess you say, gatekeeper provision, I feel like, in there. We talked about it in work session, and I think that would be another sort of failsafe to make sure these things are somewhat regulated.
And I do appreciate Ms. Reed carrying the wishes of her board forward to us, and she did very eloquently and professionally, as she always did. But we're asking her about putting parameters on things, and not trying to be flippant by saying this, please pardon if it sounds that way, this body that is sitting up right here, are the ones that should be setting the policy for that. So if there's...
I get that, I just mean for her to set the policy.
No, no.
I mean, just to talk to the board so they understand where council is and where they are.
These are just merely recommendations.
Right, well, I'm saying if we're, if you're considering this particular ordinance that's in front of us and it doesn't have those parameters, if there's a number or a timeframe that we like, or if there's a process that we like, it's kind of up to this body to work together to create what those parameters are and then make a decision as to whether or not they want to do it.
I'm not saying it's a first read, so this thing can still, I still go through a second read, and it's still not passed. My point is, yeah, just, these are some recommendations. I don't see why they can't be taken into consideration and passed on to their...
Who would you like to pass them on to?
The board members.
They are one-on-one with most of the business owners downtown more than we are. So my point is not, they're not making the decisions, but we ask them to be in the process from straightforward to now, why not in the process now? I want to make sure that what we're asking, what the downtown businesses are wanting, is kind of going to coincide and it's going to be a cohesive ordinance, that we're doing this correctly.
Okay. So, and again, in trying to create this, and again, I'll say it again, it is not critical that this passes in the next few weeks for them to be able to have a pub crawl.
Sure.
It would be necessary if you want to let them walk around with alcohol. But I don't, again, I don't think it's this major turning point. My point is, again, you know, we mentioned timeframe and participants. You know, there's already kind of been guidelines that they've been two days, and the DDA has used them that were 100, that were 100 people. If those are parameters that council is comfortable with, then we could go ahead and add those parameters into this existing ordinance right now. Or if you want to, again, if you want to turn it back over to the DDA to have them rewrite it, I don't know that they're going to do that in two weeks. Now they're going to present something to us or changes to us. Again, I'm just trying to get it...
I see what you're saying.
To be with this body. This body is supposed to be setting policy for the city of Cartersville, and it sounds like for this particular topic, we're wanting to turn it back over to the DDA or to somebody else to make those decisions for us. And...
Well, are you suggesting that we go ahead and see if we can add some of these restrictions to the orders right now here?
I'm saying that if we can have agreement on, we wouldn't be voting on it right now, but again, if there's a certain timeframe or a certain number of participants that are in this, instead of asking the DDA to meet again or the alcohol control board to take a look at this again and do that, then we can alter this. And again, my personal feeling is we could alter this ordinance and just scratch through walk-around alcohol, and it's just got to take a place in there, and we move on with our day. But I know there's others that might feel a little bit differently than that, so...
So we can throw it around between now and next council meeting, make our recommendations to key, and see if we can't iron it out.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I'm saying.
I think that sounds good.
Okay. Mr. Lovell, I'm assuming...
I'm ready, willing to do whatever y'all want me to do.
You've been taking copious notes over there, I can see you're entirely dialed into that, so... Is there other discussion or thoughts on this before we move forward? Everybody good? All right. Thank you. Again, first reading, we'll take this up for consideration in some form or fashion at our next council meeting. Mr. Hampton, move us forward, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This next agenda item is for the Electrical Interconnection Exchange Agreement. This is a standard agreement that we ask customers to enter into whenever they want to attach power generation sources onto our distribution system. This is a means for us to make sure they do not negatively affect our system, and also it's a safety thing to make sure they're not backfeeding onto our system when our guys thinking it's de-energized and someone gets shocked. We have done a visual inspection and a field test on the system, made sure it isn't operating in accordance with our guidelines. So basically, this is a standard, this is, I don't know if I can say the name, but this is for the courtyard Marriott Hotel. He's already signed it, and what I'm asking for is your authorization for Mayor and Clerk to sign the agreement so we can make this official.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Members.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, continue on, please, Derek.
Yes, sir. The next item, primary metering equipment for a expansion going on at one of our biggest customers, Aquafill. They're getting ready to do another expansion, and they're trying to get it done this fall, so time is of the essence. We needed a primary metering setup because of the tight voltage that they use. Reached out to our vendors, we got two prices from Anister and from Erby. The cheaper of the two came in at $7,804, but they had a 14-week delivery time, which would pretty much miss the fall. The other option was about $520 more expensive, but could get here in two weeks. So we opted to request to get the more expensive version so that we can have it in time to facilitate their construction schedule, and then we need a backup for the shelf, so in case we get a lightning strike on it or something, we can go out and replace it. And that one, we opted to request to do the cheaper one at $7804, for a total of $16,128.68.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. And last item, we had a damaged streetlight circuit under the driveway to the new fire station on Charlie Harper Drive. Had, I think about half the street lights were out for an extended amount of time while we investigated. Found out it was under the driveway, so instead of saw cutting and tearing up and having to replace the driveway apron going into the fire station, we hired our contractor Seagas to bore into the driveway, and this enabled us to be able to also get some spare conduits under the driveway for future for us or fiber companies. We now have conduit under the driveway, and the lights have been fixed. So we also extended the bore a little bit to minimize damage to the new landscaping that was installed at the fire station a few months ago. So the grand total for the invoice for Seagas was $7,830, and we request your approval for payment.
Okay, thank you. Questions on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Say it again.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Derek. Mr. Jones, you have the next three. And while you're making your way up, council, I'm going to add an item to the agenda. I'll take a motion to do that.
Send it.
Check it.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item is added, and we'll get to that in just a moment. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. First up is our 2021 Long-Term Sewer Flow Monitoring Project. You'll see some more of these over the next few months and years. This is with the company ADS. We did a 90-day study earlier in the year, January through March. You may recall that it rained just a bit during that time period, and we learned a few things, and that's what brought us here tonight. What we learned was that our 48-inch transmission main is one of the most reactive lines we have for a large rain event. We see flows, average flows at the wastewater plant that are around 8 million gallons a day during a, say, 3-inch roughly rainfall that's intensive in a short period of time. We can see flow peak at 30 million gallons a day in a matter of eight to 10 hours. It's like we're draining the ocean. And we need to get that fixed, and this is the first step in that process. As you can imagine, there, we have almost 200 miles of sewer, and it's tough to know where the holes are in that. And what we're going to do is to start looking at this large line. This will be, this will analyze the 48-inch line from the wastewater plant all the way to I-75 near Anheuser-Busch, so that's a pretty good stretch. It'll be installation of nine meters, one rain station that is time and date stamped to events to all of those meters. They're all tied together and networked. It allows us to see how each segment of that line behaves during a storm, and we can begin to focus our attention on the individual segment that is most reactive. The cost of this with ADS is $98,684, and I'm certainly aware that that is no small sum, but as you can imagine, if we were to take the other approach of to just start replacing line at hundreds of dollars a foot over that distance, it just becomes a project that we can't do. So we need to spend this money in order to focus that capital expenditure where the problem is and not just try to do a wholesale rip-out and replace.
On a line that size, say, when you identify something, would you be able to patch it, or would you have to replace, or does it just depend on what the damage is?
Exactly. It is a depends answer. There is certainly the ability to do point repairs, depending on the nature of the defect. If you just wanted my absolute blind guess at what's going on, I think this is going to be more of an issue of death by a thousand paper cuts rather than us having one, you know, hole the size of a pickup truck in something, because if we had a large hole somewhere on this line, somebody would call us and say, "Hey, my passion..." somewhere on this line, somebody would call us and say, hey, my pasture swirling, you know, why is that? And there would be the problem, but we, we have walked this line numerous times all the way from the plant to seventy-five, and we're looking for defects in manholes, ringing lids off, covers off, and we've certainly found those things and fixed them when we did, but they, they just are not resulting in that reduction in flow that we need to get, so we're, we're going to this step.
Got you. Thank you. Any other questions for Bob on this item? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, next item, Bob.
Yes, sir. Next up is a material restock for DNC. As you well know, we bring these in a few times a year. This one is for brass meter setting parts and some plastic sewer couplings. We did take bids for this, and the low bid was from Fort Line Water Works at six thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars, and do recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And last one for you, Bob.
Yes, sir. This is what we're calling our Collins Drive Valve Repair. September third, Public Works notified us of a leak that they had discovered. Up on the screen, it's where the aqua-colored dot is, that is an eight-inch tapping valve. That valve had been damaged, we assume by something running over it. There were tracks in the area, but it's not uncommon for something like this to happen. That valve is leaking, so when we found the, the aqua-colored valve leaking, we went and turned off the surrounding valves, and when we did, the one that's colored, covered with the yellow dot, that is a twelve-inch mainline valve, that valve broke in the process of diagnosing the problem. And when that line broke, the only way we have to stop the water with that valve out of service is to go all the way back up Collins to forty-one. Collins being a twelve-inch water main, that is a feeder main for all of the branch blocks that are off of Collins Drive, we would put several businesses out of water, we would put an entire neighborhood and multiple commercial entities out of water for a significant amount of time. In order to avoid that, what we're proposing to you in this solution tonight is that the red dot that you see on Collins Drive, that would be a twelve-inch insertion valve, and what that is, that's done by a specialty contractor, that valve can be inserted in the line with the line in service. That would allow us to then stop the water there. We installed an eight-inch valve on the other red dot on Tennessee Street, so now we can shrink that area of outage down to just this intersection, and that does a couple of things. One, that leaves everybody, all of our customers, they'll never know anything happened, they'll all stay in water. It also allows us to let this area dry out because it is completely saturated. These valves are, the top of the nut on the valve is fourteen feet deep, which probably means we'll have to dig sixteen feet deep to get to it. And as you can imagine, if anybody's ever dug a hole in, at the beach or in wet dirt, what does it do? It just wants to flow into the hole. So the idea here is for us to put these valves in, isolate the area, let it dry out, and that will allow us to dig a much safer hole that hopefully will not impact any of the other infrastructure around this area and give us a little more controlled repair. All of that said, we still don't know what's causing the leak. So for that reason, I'm asking for a little flexibility in the finances in the, in the form of a not-to-exceed number of forty-five thousand dollars. We feel like that'll give us a little extra time to cover materials that aren't anticipated, or if we run into difficulties with the excavation, and that takes more time with the contractor, then that would be able to be covered as well. And, and we are bringing in a contractor for this excavation because of the depth. We, we don't have the equipment, both the digging equipment and the safety equipment to operate at that depth safely.
Good. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve, I'd say forty-five K for the Collins Drive Valve Repair.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Chief Carter, you have the next item, please, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight a budget item. This is a vehicle purchase project that is in our fiscal year 2021 budget. A vehicle, vehicle number one will be a ten-passenger van. This will be in addition to our fleet. Primarily will be for non-emergency use for training academy, also going for deployments, and will be utilized by our honor guard. Currently, when we do need to utilize a van, we borrow one of the older vans from Carthage PD, and they've been allowing it, but it's a scheduling issue, and that's a van that they use. The second vehicle is a mid-sized SUV. This will be replacing a, a two thousand eight model within our fleet. We carried bid packages out to all local vendors here within Cartersville. We also posted our bid packages online for the recommended time. We did receive three bids in for the SUV, two bids in for the, excuse me, th, three bids in for the SUV, yes, and two bids in for the van. The total package that we're seeking tonight for this is seventy-seven thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, which would be a lease pool, which is seventeen thousand six hundred and ten dollars and twelve cents below our budgeted amount. This would include awarding the vehicles as follows. The SUV, the van, the low van that met specifications would be Prater Ford. Then on the SUV, weighed forward, beat Prater Ford by twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents, we would recommend the best bid here would, which would be Prater, just because of the twenty-one ninety-six, by the time we sent our personnel to two different locations to go with these two vehicles. So our total bid package would include Prater Ford for the van, for the SUV. Also, the graphics will be included within this for Cusse Valley Communications and Martin Eon Signs, and once again, respectfully requesting a total of seventy-seven thousand three eighty-nine eighty-eight. This is below our budgeted amount, and it is lease pool.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Carter on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Greer, you're up next.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This request is for the purchase of a fire suppression system at our north and south data centers. This is very important for protecting all of our city's server data and fiber infrastructure, as well as customers that are located in our data center. We contacted multiple vendors for quotes, and we recommend a nitrogen-based system from ASA Fire, a local company, for thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty, and that is a budgeted item and under budget.
Thank you. Questions for Stephen on this? If none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will handle the item that y'all added earlier, thank you for your trust and patience on that. Mr. Lovell?
Yes, Mayor, as y'all know, we received an adding light notice from the Merchant Law Firm on September second, 2020. We reviewed that matter and is recommending that the city deny liability at this point and direct us to inform that law firm of the same.
Okay, so a motion would be to deny the anti-lite offense?
Yes, and approve the resolution, or just to approve the resolution, which does that?
Okay. Very good. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Come on, Tom, give us the, the great news.
I'll do my best. Good evening, Honorable, Honorable Mayor and Council. We'll be looking tonight at the July two thousand twenty and comparing to July two thousand nineteen. In the general fund, you'll notice there's a big decrease in revenue there of one point eight million dollars. This actually is an auditor's error. They made a transfer last year from the general fund to the garage fund, and we found it basically after they, we closed out the year, so we're making that entry to get it back, to go back into the correct funds.
We're going to charge the auditor for doing their work for them?
I'm sorry?
We're going to charge the auditor for doing their work for them?
Uh, I'll let you take that joke.
Worth a try.
The expenses have increased by seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Two areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, the local office and sales tax, have a decrease there of about thirty-two thousand dollars for the month of July, and then the building permits and inspection fees have a decrease there of about ten thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund, revenue decreased over last year by a hundred and three thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, and decreased transfers to general fund. In the gas fund, revenues decreased over last year by two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by seventy-three thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues decreased over last year by sixty-three thousand dollars. Expenses increased by fifty-seven thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel costs, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased in transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues decreased there by two thousand dollars. Expenses increased by forty-eight thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by five thousand dollars. Expenses increased by seventy-two thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber optic fund, revenues increased over last year by ten thousand dollars. Expenses increased by twenty-three thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And in the cash position, the total unrestricted cash decreased a little bit, and total restricted cash increased a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Got anything to say?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on the financial report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Before we get to the discussion item, only because I know, once we start discussing the next item, I'll probably forget about it. We do have an item that's been tabled, two items actually, and the applicant would like for us to continue tabling that item until November fifth, is what Mr. Lovell recommends. So Chair would like to ask for a motion, if Council so desires, to, to make a motion to table both of these items, Z-20-03 and AZ-20-04, until November the fifth.
Motion to jointly table Z-20-03 and AZ-20-04 until November fifth, 2020.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And those items are tabled. Mr. Gill, if you'll get us started out with this discussion on your geo-bond fund allocations. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With the geo-bond for the park projects, we have about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars left in that account, and so coming to you tonight for direction on how we can allocate those funds the best for the Parks Recreation Department.
The pose on the list that Tom and I discussed is basically what the priority would be if Council so moves, unless you have something else you want to put on there, we'll try to expend those funds as, as best we can. Tom and I talked a little bit, if the Council, like, whatever priority you want to make, we're going to try to use, if we can, in-house. I have not sat down with Tommy Sanders, but possibly use their crews to help stretch those monies out even a little further.
We had, at the beginning of this bond project, for those that are on Council, I know that some that weren't, we had, with the Go, the Goodyear Clubhouse renovation, there was some discussion about doing some of that work in-house with our crews to try to keep the cost down, the scope of that, I'm sure has probably changed from the time that we started doing that, but I agree with that being a high priority. I know that the, also, the Aubrey Street Gym, the HVAC unit is, is more of a necessity that, I mean, it just needs to be done. And you and I spoke about this, I spoke with Councilman Stepp yesterday, I've also spoke with Councilman Cooley about potentially earmarking some of that money for improvements to Matthew Hill Park, that is right next to Summerhill School, and, because there's some basketball courts that need some, some love and care, and there's also some, a couple of tennis courts that potentially depended on how much Council would want. So what I would like to personally ask for that, I know there's some other hoops that we'll need to jump through, through legal, but, is to perhaps get a rough estimate of what that might look like for those two areas specifically.
Okay.
And just perhaps be able to, you know, if we could stretch the dollars on the Goodyear Clubhouse, I spoke with Councilman Fox earlier today, who said that was very important to him, and I want to make sure that that's included, but perhaps we can allocate some of those funds from there, find a little bit of value out of that to be able to put towards, at a minimum, I mean, you know, some, some dollars to, to take care of the basketball goals at Matthew Hill Park, would be my, my personal feeling, I won't speak for anybody else.
I agree. The park is used kind of for the youth in the area and the elder, like the walking trails, I'll just close by, but it's in disrepair, and I think all of you know Matthew Hill, and one of the things he said, when he mentioned about naming the park after him, he said, I don't mind you naming the park after me, but will you take care of it? And so I don't think we kept our promise of taking care of it. As for what he done for this city and this community, we owe it, not only to him, but to the neighborhood in general, if we can, to do something for that park. And it's not an astronomical amount of money, but it's money needed just for a basketball court, a tennis court, and enhancing the walking trails, and the infrastructure's already there, it just need enhancing.
I agree.
If it be considered, I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I would like to say that, how we're.
All right. Are there any other items that Council would like to consider, or like Tom to put into consideration, or give a little bit of guidance there, or we got a pretty comprehensive list already? You got enough direction?
I appreciate it. Yes, sir, I sure do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and I know that really and truly, you and your predecessor, the fact that we have that leftover money is a result of making good value out of the many, many projects that the taxpayers entrusted us to do, and so I want to thank you for, for doing that.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other business that needs to come forth, Council, this evening?
Mayor, one item, and I should have done it during work session, but I forgot. Tomorrow, the Ethics Committee is having their first meeting, organizational meeting, and one of their items for discussion will be the appointment of a third member. The mayor did bring to my attention that several of Council members talked about various people to be potentially appointed, and y'all only ended up choosing one. I did not know if any of y'all had names like that, that you may want me to add to that list. If you do, just after the meeting, come tell me, and I'll write them down and give those to the Ethics Committee, so they'll have them for consideration.
Or if one of you has a list of everybody that was considered by, as the Council appointee, if you could give him that list, and that those two folks may decide to go from that list, or they may decide to pick from anybody else in the city, but I thought that'd be help, perhaps helpful to them for, for consideration. Okay. Before we leave, I do want to say that the governor, earlier this week, extended his orders. I think Ms. Hodge, I'll speak for, I'll use the word you said, you're just, you're tired of these, and I think, and I think everybody else is too, but the truth of the matter is, they've, they're, they're a part of our life, and they're going to be a part of our life for a while. Ironically, I took mine off to speak, but, you know, you only have to talk to folks that have traveled in other states to know that we in Georgia have had it a lot better than a lot of other places from the standpoint of being able, for people to be able to provide for themselves and for our businesses, you know, take a look locally where our restaurants are able to be open, where our hair salons and a lot of other places that, where people are able to, again, provide for themselves, able to conduct commerce, and be able to basically have the, the satisfaction that comes along with, with being able to work for a living and being able to provide for yourself. As part of that governor's order, there are rules that need to be followed, and I think over time, some establishments are putting these by the wayside, and I'm just encouraging businesses, in particular restaurants and other places, to follow those state-manded protocols. You might be mad at us for having to enforce them, but the truth of the matter is, these are mandated by the state, and those regulations have not changed since everything was allowed to reopen, but I think over time, the veracity at which many businesses are enforcing and following these following these has, has waned a little bit, and so I'm simply making a public plea for you to follow what the state of Georgia has in place, so that we can continue to keep places open, so that people can continue to provide for themselves, and we can enjoy the, the many freedoms we have in Georgia that a lot of other states aren't, aren't enjoying right now. It's not a political statement, it's simply saying, follow what the governor has in place. And if you don't like the rules that are in place, complain to the governor, don't complain to me. That being said, anybody else? Chair, will you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Stay going.